Budget amendment number two. We talked about this, I think, at your last board meeting or at a special meeting. The board went ahead and approved this one. You'll just need to sign off on it to spend $6,700 on some equipment. I think this was the equipment that Chad was needing to purchase right before Sherry left. And that also is permissible under the ARCA. So it's a transfer into the water and sewer in ARCA money. And then the final budget amendment is the number three for the water and sewer. And this is the amendment that Sean alluded to just a moment ago to pick up $25,000 for some water maintenance and repair.
Yeah, they got stuck into that contract with American Tank Maintenance. And they've done four visual inspections last year for $25,000. That's all they've done for $25,000.
And then the second part's $54,000. This was budgeted in your last fiscal year budget, but the expenditure, it didn't get delivered or whatever. And so we had to push it into the new fiscal year.
See, yeah, it was budgeted for last year, but that they didn't get the contractor didn't get it done until we already...
Till this fiscal year. Yeah. So that's $54,000. And as Sean mentioned, that comes out of time out of purpose. The reason for that is you didn't make the expenditure in fiscal 2022. So your fund balance was higher than what you anticipated. You just pointed back down.
Yeah.
All right. And then the next item, I copied the same thing twice, unfortunately. The last item is just for your new finance officer coming in. Figures from journal entries that she'll want to make into your books and records. Maybe with some consultation in there just to make sure she's understanding. With that, she may want to get with your auditors or she can give me a call as well. So I guess if you guys are okay with these amendments, then you seem to make a motion to approve, I guess.
Make a motion to approve the budget amendments one, two, and three. What do you announce that specified on each amendment?
I'll say it. All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay. And then these are the copies for the town record for everybody to sign off.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
And then the next thing is I did not see evidence that the board had done a project ordinance for the ARCA funds a second run, second allocation. So I'm just putting this in, I'm just advising the board, it's probably a good idea to look and put this in place. And with it being a project ordinance, you won't have to reappropriate it every year. So, you know, if you don't use up the 101, 51013, if you don't use it all up in this fiscal year, you won't have to be rebudgeting because it's a project ordinance. So as I was saying, that is, and I termed it revenue replacement activities because the town falls underneath that option with ARCA, which gives you more discretion on how you spend that money. So the board will need to finalize this project ordinance if it pleases the board.
So we need to make a motion to approve this project ordinance allocation of the ARCA money. Make a motion for that.
I might motionally approve the allocation for ARCA. All in favor? Any opposed?
Is that the one we need to sign?
Yeah, that's your copy.
Okay.
And I'd like to have a sign.
We're gonna have to check.
On the other side, Sherry, I just mark it out. Initial, initial, please. I didn't know who that was going to be at that point. You made it. She'll tell you, she'll get your email. Just go take my name, the ARCA's for you.
That's all I've got.
All right, thank you back, keep her coming in.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Yeah. All right. Next up was the town hall appraisal. And I reached out to the county about that. And they got me to fill out a form. So they've not got a chance to look into it yet, but I'll update the board when they do. Next on the agenda is the ordinance for the town benches homeless. I just want to remind you, one that the now served individuals did strike down a very similar ordinance to this in the city of Boise, Idaho, where a gentleman was arrested for sleeping on the bench in the courtroom. It violated his Eighth Amendment rights.
On the memo I sent back in December of 2022, one of our own judges struck down an ordinance because it was too bad and wrong on loitering and selling and using drugs. Okay? So with that memo in mind from December 22 to you, I drafted this. Does it mean I will fly? I think it comes with more specificity. On page two, rules and regs, under B1, I put it, I put an age. In other words, vagueness and also just looking at homelessness will strike down. A lot of those are struck down. So this is anyone 18 years old and between hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. in public areas, including the street sidewalks, alley byways, or bridges, or other structures that are on a public street sidewalk, alley by the way. So with that purpose, I tried to put in some specificity. I think you should do some posting. If you adopt this resolution, the purpose of a resolution first is that whenever you change your ordinance, you have to have a public here. So this isn't the ordinance yet, but it's gone close. Because a resolution has to reflect the ordinance. And I actually drafted an ordinance at the same time in order to make the resolution. So the resolution has to mirror what you ultimately adopt in ordinance.
So if we want to consider adopting this, we need to set up a hearing.
And that's what the last paragraph, where first of all, you approve the resolution is approved and you have to have a vote. And then you set the public hearing for your April 5 meeting. Well, I put in there April 5. I mean, if you want to put it, maybe. But you have to advertise in the paper. And that's what it says. Two weeks in the start. Have your public hearing. Then at your same meeting as your public hearing, vote yea, nay, or to postpone the vote. So if you have a public hearing in April, you take input from the citizens. You can vote on the ordinance or you can postpone it to a date certain like your next board meeting.
I know the city of Asheville has started ordinance about being in the parks after 10:00 p.m. And I know the ACLU is challenging them right now.
There's no clear answer. The reason these loitering and sleeping on the sidewalks and benches has been voted, or court orders entered against these ordinance is they're involved in this is because if you don't have somewhere for them to go.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I'm not sure if you all have any relationship with Johnson House. I'm sorry, I don't have the code. The Johnson, Earl Burton house.
I'm nervous. I'm a little bit imminent.
You have to have a place for them.
See, that was a big part of the market, yes, was there was not room in the homeless shelter for him to go to. So they really, you couldn't enforce their ordinance unless there was actually room at the homeless shelter. We don't have a homeless shelter.
I think we need to have a public hearing. I mean, just go ahead and set it up, see what the public's got to say and go with that.
They're the ones that reached out to us.
And their voice is just as important as these people that, you know.
Something to consider is whether you adopt the resolution is putting a notice in the paper that you want the public to comment.
Yeah. I would like to hear what the rest of the public comment has to say about it.
And whether to enter a relationship with Johnson Earl Burton, that's what I was, that they would take people, but you'd have to believe them. So is that law enforcement? But you can post. You need, at least, the least you can do is post.
So we need to post this resolution in the paper?
No, not the resolution. Post the areas where you're having the issue.
Okay.
You can post them, but when you post it, you know overnight sleeping and you'll see a sign in a park and underneath you'll have a statue where it's a crime. For this one, you wouldn't do that until you have an ordinance in place. Because this is a misdemeanor. Lording is a misdemeanor. It's a 14-1. So if something you could start now is perhaps posting the areas that are critical, you just wouldn't put the criminal statue with it because you don't have an ordinance yet. I think posting helps some. Some communities have posted.
But I was under the assumption before that you told us we couldn't do anything like that until we had a, an ordinance.
You can't do anything and charge them with a crime until you have an ordinance. But you can post it without the criminal notice. Just post it overnight, pretend. And if they honor it, fine. If they don't honor it, it doesn't have the criminal, it has no, there's no crime that attaches to it.
Do you think we need to do the public hearing?
I bet you don't.
I do, too.
So all you would be doing is adopting the resolution, not the ordinance.
Okay.
I want to make a motion to adopt the resolution for posting.
At our next board meeting, which would be April 5. I second that.
So you're adopting to have a public hearing, is what you're doing?
Yes.
Pursuant to this resolution.
Okay. And that's going to be the April meeting?
Yeah. And it'll be published twice in the Star. But it doesn't mean you're adopting the ordinance. You're inviting the people to make common on this.
And we would need whatever you guys want to put in there, probably next week's edition to cover that 10-day window that you got to have it in there before.
I got it. I've got their number and their dates.
Okay, you're gonna send it to them?
Yeah, I'll send it to them. But I'm going to reduce it a little bit and pay an arm and a leg. You can't...
I don't know what you're talking about. We don't talk that much here.
It won't be all of like the first four or five paragraphs, but you have to have the gut. And so it'd be more like definitions. And if we finish it. Okay.
All right, next up is the appointment of a new alderman to fill the position vacated by Brian Johnson. Has the board decided how they want to... Application. Yeah, like mostly.
Wait, wait, does it need to make people just decide the city?
You need a little more. Okay. 16863 does not put a time limit on it and does not say A, B, C, D is one of the rare occasions where the municipality can actually through 20 groups. But you have to have specific rules for the process. Okay, so I'd like to, um, so you'll call it the process for appointment or board agents. So that's what we're going to call it. That's why I like to use it. Process for appointment for board agents. And then after that, if you all discuss one, two, three, you're going to take applications. You could just put them one time, you want to take applications. Where is the application? What do you want in it? And maybe Amanda draws it up, but you have to have to agree on what's in the application. And every person gets that same application. So if you all can agree on...
There's mine.
With the application.
Address, contact information.
We've only had this on the table just one month, right? Can I, I'm going to vote to leave it on the table till our next month's meeting. And then we will have the application and everything drawn up and ready to get processed by our April meeting.
So somebody's going to draw up the application?
Yeah, we draw it.
Okay. So you'll have the application and then you can go ahead and decide on that, who's going to, how long are they going to be available? So time.
Okay.
Time, the position is open.
Okay. So is it same, it's happened on two weeks, is what you're saying, or a month, whatever?
No. And two weeks, everybody's been, I mean, two weeks is...
Well, I was just using as example.
Yeah, I know, but I would maybe recommend a little longer. Just so everybody's minded down. Okay, so how long do you think? These are the things that have cost issues. When there's not specificity with the amount of time, it's okay. Okay? So you have that in the, you have that in the application for the process. And I'm, you can put in anything you want. I'm just picking what's cost to have issues. Okay? And are you going to have appointments after reviewing the applications? Are you going to have appointments for the people to be interviewed? Okay? You're going to have appointments to interview them. You need to agree on the interview committee. So it could be the two of you, Amanda and Deb, Mary and you, but it's okay, whatever it is, you've got to agree and it could be a board member. It's like we're called board members. So then, um... For a board member, it's not personnel, so it's not per session. So you've got to be careful. You don't want to say, well, that person served first time, 10 years ago. You don't want to do anything like that. They don't expect that. But a board member has to be in an open session. So the committee comes with recommendations and you all vote. And you come with a recommendation. You don't have to disgorg each and every. You just come with the recommendations to the board and the vote is in open session. The review of the qualifications are in open session. And that's what, and then the vote is in open session. And the thing is, people who apply, they're all good. More than likely, they're all, they're all good. They've worked. So it's just a matter that someone may have actually served on the public body. It gets them a foot in the door, so you may want to consider in your application, not just the basics, but well, work history. And that way it gives you an opportunity to see if they've served on the public body or government body. Realize that they have to go by this. So, and that's a tough, you know, it's tough, it can't be a real necessarily. Okay, that's mine.
All right. I'll make a motion that we table this for our April 5 meeting. Okay. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, and next up is the sit house agreement. Let's have a chance to look at that.
I know some of the regents may not use this. I don't want to take it away from them. I want to make a motion that we can...
I got a couple. One, look at number seven. First of all, my understanding, this is for about five to six uniforms?
Yes.
Okay, oh, the specialty apparel rental service agreement.
Okay.
Number seven. You can terminate, this is good. You can terminate this agreement provided all the rental items are paid for. Here's, so this is good. I always look for what's tied into termination. Okay, A, any dispute shall be resolved by binding and final arbitration. That's good. You don't go to court. It's hard for you. But that means you can toenail in and they initiate, you initiate the North Carolina arbitration act. You need our arbitration act because it says state or federal. Where the federal arbitration act, you're sitting in Asheville, there's no need. And you never know if uniforms, it's not a $2 million bridge construction. But you cover yourself all of those. And so we're not going to do the federal arbitration as an NC arbitration. And then the very last line on that, the exclusive jurisdiction for resolution, any such dispute shall lie in the state where the customer is located. They shouldn't put in and county. Otherwise you'd be defending it in great county or something like somewhere in Alabama. So it's lie in the state and county where the customer is located. And it's good after that. I mean, the fact that they were going to... Seeing arbitration. These are big outfits. I mean, this is a big company. So it has to be in the state and county. So those two things toenailed in there. I think you're good to go. And initial.
So we need to have them to correct that?
Well, we need to toenail in it, initial and tell them they need to initial it and then you're good to go. They don't need...
So we have Sean to contact them.
That'd be fine. Just make sure it says state or federal. We have NC arbitration act. We don't, if they come back and say, well, it says state, but it also says for federal. So you're going to be agreeing that you, so you want that marked down for the NC arbitration and the state and county, as long as Sean... You said Sean?
Mm-hmm.
Just, you would, Ellen, just write down the exact verbatim, what you want in there and I'll, I'll contact them.
Or is that something that you should contact them?
You've been, you spoke since 2011. They haven't been an issue, have they?
Okay, for the board, that's true.
Agree to it as long as they're willing to agree to that.
Number eight.
We have that motion.
Make a motion to agree to the rental service agreement with the changes in number eight, with it federal and state. And county, is that what you said?
No, no. Pursuant to the North Carolina arbitration act. Strike state or federal and say North Carolina arbitration. Oh, and then the last one, state and county for the customer.
Yeah, just leave that for me.
I'll save it.
All right. All in favor? All right. Anybody coming? Next up, under the old business was the route away on Long Creek to the old tank for Karen Leo.
It's the one that you said you'd come and have a little night?
No. This is what I have. So I mean, if there's something else out there, but you all, I don't know that you own any land on Long Creek. I could not find where the town owns any land on Long Creek. And if you don't own the underlying land, you cannot live a right way. So Ms. Leo's asking... So, um, this lady was asking the town for a right of way and the town can't give it. They don't own the underlying land, that's the critical, no one can, whether it's the town or individual. So unless there's something out, some deed out there that she knows about, you don't own the underlying land. What I did find though, just the watershed of Long Creek, is that you have a special use permit in the far surface. The town got it March 1st of 1840.
This is on a separate piece of property.
And that's what you said.
Yeah, it's about half a mile from the water.
Is that Bergen Creek, is that Bergen Creek?
No, that's where we get our water now, this is just where a tank is.
This was an extra tank that had been put up in the late seventies, early eighties, is my understanding, I keep finding much documentation on it. It was my understanding, it was put on private land and never owned the land.
So you can't give them right?
No, I can't find any documentation on it that we ever owned it.
Okay, if she can, you can bring it back before the board, but you wouldn't be able to go on it right now.
I don't really have anything to update right now. And, uh, next thing on new business would be the, uh, Marina Basely's asking for a late credit, she needs her package.
Looking for the whole, like, credit at the 478?
Yes, I think so. Would you get Amanda to come in here? How would you get Amanda?
So the 47816, that's over the irregular.
Amanda, that way, we'll get her in here and she'll clarify. Man, don't that, um, Miss Basely's, uh, request for the late credit, exactly how much was she wanting? The 47816?
Yeah. The answer is one. It is the 478.
Okay. And she. Hey, what she's got? She always, I don't know.
Sean, there's one I have a question on that, she's had two late credits.
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the, um, total of 47816 toward her late credit. Just do away with it.
I'll save. All right, all in favor? Anybody opposed? All right. All right, next up is, uh, Mr. Sterro.
All right. You have the floor, George. Wanted to give you several updates today. The first one is the big project that we've been waiting on for Appalachian Regional Commission money to fund, the meter replacement project in the, in the, two new wells. And, uh, it's gone all the way up the food chain to Washington and they've reviewed it, all the technical documents have accepted our comments back to them. And the only remaining thing that needs to be done before they'll issue an award of the money, which is almost 2.2 million dollars, would be an appraisal on Danny's property. Danny McIntosh, we're hoping to acquire his property to put these two new wells on it, so, um, town needs to go ahead and gauge an appraiser, however you all want to do that. Um, because they don't, they won't, we can't go to the next step until we get that submitted back to Washington.
Okay.
So I, anything we can do to help with that? I know we identified a local appraiser that could potentially do it, but I don't think he's backed up and.
Yes.
Have you, have you spoke to him, Sean?
Not in a few days, but he's been backed up, the last, the last time I spoke to him, he was backed up.
So as long as we have him as the appraisal we have that we do have, that's okay with the, um?
It doesn't matter who you, they just need an MAI appraiser that, that.
I guess what you need, we need the appraisal ASAP.
We need the exact, the document, we need to send that to Washington before they'll, they'll approve the funding, once and for all. But that's really good news, I mean, we've gotten, jumped through all the rest of the hurdles that, that, uh, this program has and the Appalachian Regional Commission typically doesn't award a hundred percent grants, but since Graham County is, was distressed at the time we made application, they're making an exception of this. So I, I'd rather not drag our feet here to, with the appraiser, because it's, uh, it's almost to the finish line.
Yeah.
So do we need to go and talk to, to this appraisal again today?
Probably need to reach out to him today, I think he'd be the best one to do it. I mean, we could probably find an appraiser somewhere else in the region and I'm happy to try to help do that, but, but this, this fellow's local and he's probably more aware of what the property values are than, than anybody. But it's, it's the pleasure of the board, it's how you want it pursued.
We'd reach out and.
Yeah, I'll reach out to him today. Do you, do you want me to do it? Does Sean need to do it?
Doesn't matter, I mean, one of y'all, there's a lot of fish in front of you to do it.
Yeah.
But we definitely need to get back to you today with what he has to say.
Yeah, keep me in the loop, sure, I, and I'm, I'm happy to talk to him too. If you wanted to just kind of send it my way, I can, I can help coordinate it, but I don't know the fellow, I can't remember his name, what's his name again?
Brian Farley.
Brian Farley, yeah. Yeah, I'm happy to, you can give me the phone number, I'll, I'll, it sounds like we've reached out to him before and he's just backed up, but there is a little bit of urgency on this, if he could see his way clear to help his town out.
We could even walk to his office, it's just right around the corner.
Maybe after the meeting, we can go visit him, yeah.
Sure enough.
Yeah.
All right, second item, um, this is more good news. We, we may remember this, we have helped the town apply for a stormwater master planning grant for the Ford Street area. That's the area town that y'all been, you know, a long time struggling with localized flooding and, and, uh, so the ARPA, ARPA, the American Rescue Act, had a stormwater pot of money and North Carolina had, had used that in this past fall round to accept project applications. And so we applied on behalf of the town for $75,000 to study the Ford Street area's facility. And what, what, uh, what the study will involve is to go survey all the stormwater piping that's, that's within the bypass, do a hydraulic model to see, you know, what, what pipes need to be enlarged, which pipes need to be extended, where we need to, you know, put new pipes under the highway. DOTs, if they own the bypass, are going to have to be involved with some of that. But what this will result is, is a master plan that will, will put some capital improvements in a priority order that the town can take and hopefully get some additional money, possibly from ARPA in the future, to begin to construct these new lines and hopefully eliminate the flooding in the Ford Street area one involved.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
So it's, it's, it's not a cure-all, but it's a first step in, in trying to identify the problem and seeing where, where the town can make certain improvements. So you'll get an official letter from the state on this and there'll be some timelines to accept the grant and so on and so forth. That hasn't happened yet, but I wanted to let the town know that, um, at least the, the project has, has been awarded the money. So that's a really good thing.
Yeah, absolutely. So that first stage is just the study only?
Just the study, yeah, there's no construction money.
No kind?
But, but in order to get the construction money, you have to have a plan, so this is, this is a really logical first step for that.
Okay.
Okay, this document that you, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at this or not, this is the third thing, this is a big, big, uh, piece of documentation for your water system. This is another grant that the town got many years ago now and it hasn't been finalized until now. And the reason it hasn't is because when we changed the approach to the water treatment plant, remember we were going to do the second phase at Tallulah Creek to bring it back online? And now we've come up with this alternate project that, uh, is bet, is, is made better spent than that to drill new wells to, to, uh, replace all the water meters in town. That's, that's a part of this plan here. This is a document that basically looks at your entire water system, um, maps it, does, we did some hydraulic modeling, we created a list of projects that you'll see in the back that are part of a 10-year capital improvements plan. This, this is a document that actually helps you qualify for additional money for future grant cycles. And so I present it to you today, we've, we've updated it with the, with the current, um, project that we're getting the funding for. And the action that I would request today is that you formally adopt this as, as the Water System Assessment Inventory and Assessment Plan. And that way we can go ahead and close this out and, and there's, there's some additional grant money that you haven't pulled down yet that, that allow you to do that and, and close everything out. So I'd ask for any questions on this, I know it's a, it's a document that, that you probably just seen him make for the first time yesterday whenever he received it, but it's a, it's a pretty comprehensive document.
Is there any liability in this for the town?
No.
For any payment?
No, it's just, it's just a formality to try to, to get this closed out. A lot of small, a lot of small towns have these reports that they haven't finished up yet and so it's putting a lot of pressure on engineers like us to get this.
DWI funds, they'll let you pay up to the last five percent, but then the project closeout requires that the municipality adopt it officially.
Right.
Um, for them to close out that last five percent.
So if you vote to adopt it, then it'll appear in the minutes of this meeting and then that, those minute, minutes will be submitted with this report to the, the state of North Carolina.
That area, are you talking, are you responding back to the Karen Leo? That's a different area, I don't even know if it's even out there.
So Long Creek was?
Yeah, that's the Long Creek Water Treatment Plant. Yeah, that tank that, that y'all were talking about, I'm not even sure where that is, it's not even mapped. It's not, it's not an active part of the water system.
Oh, no, no.
I make a motion to approve or to adopt the AI, AI report for the water system assessment.
I guess you've got, I have liability and the town's forced to.
Right, but it's a hundred percent grant, I mean, the town didn't have any, any financial.
All their food?
Doesn't need it all.
Just for y'all's clarification about adopting that, if you put forward any more grant applications like the ARPA grants for water, uh, they give you points if you formally adopted one of those because it also includes a capital improvements plan, which changes. But by having that formal adopted version, when you go to apply, you get, I forget, it's 10 or 15 points automatically for adding that as a management document.
Okay.
Now it's not.
It's beneficial, isn't it?
It'll change throughout the years and, you know, once you start marking things off the CIP plan, you can revise that, add new ones, but that's the big push from the funding sources.
Yeah, for example, if you go to the last, uh, part of the report, it's the 11 by 17 that pulls out, you'll notice a timeline over the next 10 years of, of projects that, that are scheduled. They don't have to be done that way, but it's, it's a planning, like Jay was saying, it's a planning, um, instrument that they give you additional points for, for future projects. In fact, if you look at Moose Ranch Road Water Line Replacement, we did some hydraulic modeling out there and determined that that would be a really significant project for the town to go over the next three years. And that was one of those projects, Mayor, if you remember, we submitted it to Carville Estabe, we submitted.
Yeah.
And it's part of a, you know, a logical plan.
Oh, absolutely.
For sure, so.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thanks.
All right. We're going to close to discuss some stuff with our attorney. No. I can make a motion.
She's, that's not the one. Is this one?
Yeah.
Does it have anything? That's page two, you need page one.
I've got to cut it out and stuff here.
It's page five.
Yeah, it's right here. Attorney client privilege. Yeah.
Okay, pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 143, that is 118 on 11A3 and 143 dash 318 on 11C, I move that the Town of Robbinsville Town Council go into closed session to receive advice from Ms. Ellen Davis, attorney to the Town of Robbinsville Town Council, which advice comes within the preview of the attorney-client privilege. The advice will be general legal advice about legal issues or legal matters.
I second that. Coming out of closed session, there was really no action taken except for, um, number five of the new business. Pursuant to that, we're going to make a motion to petition hide, to sign the CDVG grants.
I'll save. All in favor? Any votes? Some of the new business we have, and, um, do we have a motion to adjourn? Make, make a motion to adjourn?
Taken.
All right. Make adjourn, get to thirty?